I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, of the Titusville Area School District Board of Directors for their regular board meeting. Madam Secretary, do you have a roll call?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Monica. Next time, I'll just call you Monica, and then I'll get your attention.
Thank you.
Let's pause for a moment of silence. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. An executive session was held on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty P. M. in the administration offices office conference room to discuss student matters. There are no agenda revisions this evening. Is there any public comment this evening? Moving on to the general resolutions. Resolution number one, which is the approval of the general resolution, A, the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Jack makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Krista makes the second. Are there any additions, corrections to those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under financial activities, we have the tax collector reports, treasures reports, payment of bills. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Jim makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Jill makes the second. Are there any further questions? You will see at place updated board bills.
Just a comment on that. We had to get a payment for Stark, and that is on there. There'll be one final payment after this. Stark was the H V A C project, the company that did that. They also included where SystemWorks checks that were run from January second to January fourth as well. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to get ahold of us.
There's also an updated personnel schedule.
Just need to vote on that.
Yep, we need to vote on financial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I got ahead of myself there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. In your at place, you will find a personnel schedule, and it is updated as well. Do you want to make any comments on those?
Let's get a motion first.
Oh, I'm here.
That's okay.
We're good. I'm already on a two-hour delay. Okay, Jack makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Krista makes the second.
I'll just go through a couple of the updates on Schedule A. We added another resignation of a cafeteria employee. We had an appointment of a, um, the cafeteria floater, there was just a shift in the date. The support staff transfer, no, let me go back. So Schedule C, initially last Monday on the eighth, you will have remembered, hopefully. It's just coming back to me now. We had originally put Stephanie Donovan on the appointment. However, she is a transfer, so that's why you see the new Schedule D. So she's not an appointment because she's already an employee, but we just shifted her to the correct schedule. Nothing on Schedule E, Schedule H, there were a few additional leaves of absences included. Sorry, I can't flip fast enough. Schedule I remained the same. Under Schedule J, change of degree, Melinda Watkins is moving from Masters plus thirty to Masters plus forty-five, and her letter is in there as well. Under Schedule K, supplemental appointments, we added, um, um, I believe we added Nathaniel Lick as the set building advisor, as well as Jeff Lettler as head tennis coach. Under retirements, that did not change, and we recognized those three individuals last Monday. Schedule O remained the same, and Schedule R, an additional substitute through E S S, was added.
Questions there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to committee reports under tax and finance, we have Resolution Two, adopt the Nango Technology Center's twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kevin makes the motion, and Jack makes the second. Are there any questions here?
No questions there in the right, John?
What's that?
It's good, man.
It's approved by the VOTEC Board. I mean, yeah, I can review it. I mean, you know, we had a few concerns about it, and we've stated those. But yeah, I would, I would recommend approving it. But I think the scrutiny that was placed on it was well-deserved, and I think Lynn did a good job talking to them about that. And I think the more you do that, I think the more transparent it'll become.
Well, and I would point out that it wasn't just Lynn's questions. There were other school districts that had very similar questions that Lynn posed.
I mean, from our standpoint, it isn't much of an increase. But you know, that's not how I like to look at things, because our enrollment's going down. So you know, overall, their budget's going up. You know, we shouldn't be happy necessarily just because we had a small increase, because our enrollment turns around, and we're going to own more of that budget, so.
I think they are here. If you please speak up, and we'll see some of the other people speak up.
Yeah.
Happy to know, can I speak? Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it's been a good process. I think they just need to keep working at it.
And Monica and I plan to go in person next month. It's tempting to go on Zoom, but it's also hard to communicate clearly on Zoom. And so we plan to both go next time and continue to ask questions, even though sometimes it takes more than one time at a question to get an appropriate answer. So we're not going to give up on this, because we are concerned that, you know.
I think the biggest concern is transparency.
Yes, yes. There are a number of questions, and I did feel that I got dodged on a question last, last time. And so we'll ask it again this time, and see if we can.
When I was on, on that board, they always alluded to us that the business managers and the superintendents were part of the process.
They are, we are.
Sure, yep. Now, how do you interpret? I mean, you know, my part of that process is, to be honest, is a very uncomfortable meeting, because like, I'll ask a lot of questions, and I get the answers. There's not, it's really more the direction, I think, the VOTEC Board wants to see them go. For example, if you add a program, did you add a program because there was a need? Or did you add a program? If you get rid of a program, why did you get rid? You know, those are more driven. I think from a budget standpoint, you know, there's some things that roll off the books that they then insert stuff into, and we ask them those questions. That really is at the board level to decide that. So we look at it from the standpoint of what they're putting down on a budget is there, and we believe the numbers will be accurate. From a policy decision, it really is more with the board.
Do they ever conduct any, like, polls or surveys on what should be, what should we add, or what's?
I asked if there was demand for this course, and I, yes. And then I said, is it coming from within the VOTEC student population or outside? And they said some of both. You know, so could I, did I get anything very specific? No. But this course is apparently driven somewhat by the state, and it's a part of a career cluster.
Yep.
So that's where.
What course are you talking about?
Child development.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And that's the new course that they're implementing.
Which this also would allow people to be one of their pathways to graduate.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's their justification for it. And the fact that the lease came off the books, so they had money for it.
So what kind of certification do you get with that?
I think Monica probably read it more carefully. Can you answer that?
I can't remember what it was, a C, was it a C A, C A D, or a?
C D A, maybe.
Certification C D A. That's where you get certification, where you can go into a daycare facility. I believe it's a state license. Is it a state license?
Like an associate's, maybe?
No, no, it's not a associate. It's more of like a license and certification.
Like an accreditation.
Accreditation, where you can use the credit towards a semester at college if you decide to further your education into a career path of early childhood development, depending on what universities would take that credit. I don't know what's guaranteed, what universities would take that credit, but at least the kids could go out and get a job, or start a daycare, something like that, after school.
Hopefully, our state colleges would pay them, so it's driven by the state, right?
Well, I would just say that I talked with, there's a early child development program that they are promoting, and I shared it with our high school principals and our family consumer science teacher, because we have child development here. And there is a program that if you work twenty-five hours in a daycare and continue to work twenty-five hours through your entire college time, they will pay for your credits. But then after, after you graduate, if you were to, to receive your bachelor's in early childhood, you're giving them a two-year commitment to stay in that field. Doesn't mean that you have to stay at that same daycare or, or work at a daycare. You could be an early childhood teacher for a school district. But with early childhood, you're limited to grades K or K four for us up to third grade. Can't teach beyond third grade. But you know, it's a grant right now through the, through the state that they're covering credits that you could basically get four years of college for free.
But you can also take this and go into preschool, become a preschool teacher. Like, say, if you have that program there.
Yep.
Would, I mean, a benefit also, and I can't remember, what was that ready? When you were getting ready for graduation, and maybe you didn't do so well on the P S S A, this would be a path.
Well, certainly going. Well, a Keystone, a graduation pathway is what you're talking about. But you could do that, like, with going to the Vanago Technology Center.
That's what I'm saying.
So those kids that maybe are interested in early childhood development could go there, and they have the three-year program, and that would be one of their graduation pathways.
And they may not have done so well on, maybe, some exams themselves.
That is correct.
What was that called? Ready something?
Isn't, isn't it pathway, career paths?
It's graduation pathways. The P A Future Ready? That's one of them, yes, that we would be able to count if a student met that pathway. You're right.
Any other questions? We do have a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Com?
Yes.
Mrs. Kressman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mrs. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer is asking. Mrs. Steingduler?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Chatterman?
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you. Resolution three, approval of business manager to enter agreement with an electricity supplier company for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion? Kevin makes the motion, or Jim makes the second?
Just a quick comment. We, we don't know what point we'll lock. We just know there's some windows of opportunity coming up. We're locked at probably one of the, basically historically low number. It's likely to go up, we're just trying to minimize that right now. So it just gives us the flexibility, and there's an opportunity to take advantage of it.
So there's not more than a year?
We're out until, well, almost a year. December two thousand and twenty-four, we're locked until.
But what I'm saying is, are we tying our hands by only saying one year, or if you could go?
Well, I see, yeah, I see how you're reading it. We lock, that's given us the opportunity to lock in this year. I could lock multi-year. Yeah. But it's a good point.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under Personnel, Resolution number four, approval of the Titusville Area School District Rocket's online campus director job description. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Jack makes the motion, and?
Monica.
Monica makes the second. Any questions there? That job description was in your packet.
I, I have one. What if we were calling this a director? If at some point in time, we may not want a director, we want to have an administrator for that position, how do we?
We would bring it back for consideration.
Just the job description, is that what you mean?
Yeah, we're approving just the description.
That is correct, which is just the job description.
So we want to change the description?
We would amend it.
Any other questions there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under Buildings and Grounds, Resolution number five, approval of the two thousand and twenty-four Engineering Services Agreement with Stifler McGraw. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Jim makes the motion, and Mark, do you want to make the second? Any questions there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution six, the approval of agreement with William T. Spader Company, Inc. for replacement of Titusville Middle School boiler. Her co-stars, zero, zero, eight, E twenty-three, ten, sixty-five. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Jack makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Jill makes the second. Any discussion on that?
I have something, which I probably should have contacted. I was reading, and it says for clarifications, but it proposed that they were looking at having an engineer come in. They propose an engineer come in to look at the connections.
Oh.
Is that what I'm seeing right here?
That is in there. They recommend that, I believe Josh has taken a look at that, and viewed that as not necessary. We did ask about that.
That is correct.
So I think we're fine there.
We're fine, okay.
And we'll follow up with him, because we can always do that if we feel it's necessary as well. These boilers are being swapped out for, they're basically identical boilers, so the design shouldn't be different.
Okay, okay. It doesn't make that seem that way in there?
Right, exactly.
Okay, I was wondering.
That's, that's their fine print on making sure they're not liable for hooking up. But I will talk with Josh about that.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Instructional Student Services Committee. Resolution seven, the reapproval of the ARP S R Health and Safety Plan, version one, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Monica makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Jill, Krista makes the second. Any questions there? We've noted that's the same, no, no changes to that from, from earlier.
Is that long for the T S R to be executed by the president as opposed to superintendent?
That is correct. We've been doing that. We have to, as an A R P S R requirement, we've been doing that each six months.
How's it you?
Well, it's, it's a tough, tough signature there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution eight, approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four Services Agreement with Education Direction LLC, M G T, for mathematics instruction support. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Krista makes the motion, do I hear a second? Mark makes the second. Any questions? We did hear a presentation this week of, from this company.
And their support is going to come in and work with district administrators on specifically math. And we are planning on using the rural and low-income schools funding that we receive from the state, which is ultimately through federal. And this year, we were awarded sixty thousand, eight hundred and some change, but we will have a thousand left over after working with this contractor or vendor, with the intentions that if things, you know, go well, that that may be something that we look for additional support in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, using that same funding source. Starting with administration first. Kevin, they are almost what I would consider a sister company to Step-by-Step Learning, who we use for our literacy. Is there anyone that wants to share something from the, from the Instructional Student Services Committee?
There is a component, Kevin, with this, for the teachers too. In the beginning of, you know, just talking to them, and there's some communication with them also.
It's not your program, it's just a help.
Yes.
It's support, it's to support instruction.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution nine, approval of discipline waiver and stipulations for students G and H of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Jack makes the motion? Kevin makes the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Transportation and Food Services. Resolution ten, authorization for administration to prepare and advertise an R F P for a food service management company. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Monica makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Kevin makes the second.
I would just say that we have prepared that entire document, which is a series of the document plus attachments. We've prepared that, and we have sent that to the P D E representative and have received the all-clear to begin the advertisement of that. So with approval, then we'll get that advertised.
Any other questions there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution eleven, approval of bid award for the purchase of district van in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars to TriStar Kia. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Jack makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Jill makes the second.
Was there any lack of these vehicles being available?
Yeah.
Yep.
They are available. Speaking of this bid, one is available. I can't speak to the other one, I think it is.
Yep, this, the one that is under the TriStar Kia, we have to take ownership before, on or before March first. So now that it's going to be approved, then we can move forward with that.
It should be pretty quick.
Yep.
This one was a bid, because we couldn't get it through Co-Stars. The next one will be Co-Stars.
Yeah, there are two here, so this is the first one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twelve, approval of the purchase of a district van in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars per Co-Stars zero, two, six, E two, three, two, one, five from TriStar. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Krista makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Jim makes the second.
We did put that information in your packet, but you also noticed that it includes all of the outfit that is needed for it to be usable with students.
Is there any reason we didn't get both from the same, both Kias or both?
The, can you talk about the first one?
These are both from the same dealership, coincidentally. This is more a larger van, a haul more students. The other one, we wanted something that was a little, that could be maneuvered and used by maybe faculty a little more. So that, and they didn't have that through Co-Stars, that one had to be bid out. And we did receive two bids, but this same dealership was the lowest.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, the last one went, I want to say like fourteen or fifteen years. So, yeah. Probably didn't need to go quite that long. I would, I would tell you probably twelve.
Saves renting the van.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, it, it saves pretty quickly the cost.
So.
We either take them to a service garage, or sometimes a transportation contractor. Depends on what, what type of service it is. No, we do not, no.
Any other questions there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Policy. Resolution thirteen, approval of the following school board policies for second reading. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is that Monica?
Yep.
Monica and Jack, second? Any questions on those? Thank you to the Policy Committee for all that work. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution fourteen, reaffirm commitment to policy zero, one, one, principles for governance and leadership. Do I hear a motion? Mark makes the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Krista makes the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You do not have any?
Once we have reaffirmed it and approved it, then Terry will let P S B A know that we've taken that opportunity to reaffirm, and they will send us a new poster, and we will have everybody's signature, and then that ultimately will be displayed back in the back in the frame.
Lynn, just under legislative, real quick, I am in Harrisburg next week, if, if somebody has any issues.
Okay. Everybody here? If you have any?
I mean, we have a full agenda, but I'm glad to speak, and it'll definitely be on charter.
I was gonna say, I, please hammer that one.
That'll be one of them.
Yeah, that, that is a serious concern.
And I'll give a report.
Don't come back without a reduction.
Yeah.
I'll do my best.
We do want you to come back.
Yeah, we do want you to come back, whether you have a reduction.
I might be there a while.
Yeah. We do not have anything under negotiations at the moment. Under administration, we have information from the superintendent, staff, and board liaisons. We had at place a report from the Safety Committee, so read through that at your leisure. The Nutrition Magazine. Then we move to future meeting dates. Buildings and Grounds will be Monday, February the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five thirty in the admin office boardroom. Our board committee meeting, back to Monday, February the twelfth, here in this room at seven. The Policy Standing Committee, Standing Committee meeting will be Tuesday, February the twentieth, followed by our regular board meeting at seven. Are there any other board comments this evening?
I could probably go through my vacations, but I'm having a meeting, like, well, I can't talk like that.
That's okay.
That's, that's all right.
We'll work through it. Yeah, we need to still reschedule that.
Okay. You deserve a vacation, you work hard, it's all right, it's all right. Are there any other public comments this evening? Come to the podium, please, and give us your name and address.
Hello. Joe Hornsorn, two, two East Brew Street. Thank you all, I appreciate you all being up here, and so I like to talk to you. I'd like to express my concern for traffic pedestrian safety down on Main Street at the school. I know that the one, the crossing guard down there, I do the one side. I'm not down on the other end, because the other one's gone, because I don't think she's gonna be back for a while, getting knee surgery, you understand? But what I'd like to see you guys do is get people to slow down out there. They don't slow down. It's, it, I'm mad, because, you know, they're going down there at thirty-five mile an hour, and I got a horn hat and a thing, and they don't care. And it's, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, it's not, the other day it was snowy, and it's just, it's, it's a, it's a problem. I'd like to see the rest, and it's, uh, I, I hope you all. And uh, it's the uh, I I hope you all, uh, please put some lights out there or something, but people aren't slowing down, and there's uh, and and if you can't, I'd like to get the people to slow down, and I'd like to see another prospect.
Thank you, Joe, well, we are also concerned, we'll take that under advisement and see what we can accomplish.
Yeah, I just, uh, I don't know, I think if you had the the signs posted with the time accurately for one, because it doesn't even start till after three o'clock, and they let out at two fifty, so that's really technically not even fifteen mile an hour down through there. Uh, I mean, I have video, I I took, like, I filmed my whole phone up and I haven't edited it down, but nobody could have slowed down there. And I know Rocky Grove has signs and flash, and and I noticed that when the police were down there for a couple days, and they had the flashing lights, people slowed down, they were all doing fifteen mile an hour. Uh, and uh, uh, I think it it had something that said, hey, you better slow down, maybe people would, just as I did. So uh, and I also like to see somebody personally in charge of doing that, like, who do you talk to says, yeah, I'm going down there to make sure people are doing their, we have somebody in charge of the traffic team, you know, I'm not sure who that individual person is, but I'd like to speak to that person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. On with that, if I could say something, um, there is signs down there, there's like a, what is that, a speed limit thing? However, it is blocked by the buses sitting there.
Oh.
Waiting to come up in the afternoon, in the afternoon, there are buses blocking that, so nobody does see it.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is something that really need to get the city involved with because via municipal code, it's more under the city's guidance than in the school district. School district has stepped in more and more, but there there needs to be some discussion there as well.
Uh, we can do that, we can do that.
I.
Yeah.
There is one on Main Street.
There's two now. You really, I mean, the ones that I see that are effective are are really the ones that flash.
There's one down here.
They change the speed and they flash.
Shows you how fast you're going.
On Main Street.
So you're always in a faster.
As the lights go around in it, it tells you your speed.
Right before that.
It's been there a while.
There's two, there's one down here.
You gotta slow down to see it. Now, but those are the ones that are effective, in talking with other schools.
Do you know where Stephanie Fullerton used to live?
You can get those, because people think there's somebody watching.
Is it the same sign that has the lights around it?
Yes, and then it tells you your speed.
It's right before it.
It's like right near Stephanie Fullerton's old house.
Apparently, it's not that effective.
I have addressed concerns with that too, because I have noticed it also, that people come to me.
We we know who to call.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Is there any other business before this board? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Jack makes the motion, do I hear a second? Kevin makes?
Oh, Kevin.
Kevin waved to us, so Kevin makes the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hey, thank you for all, all for coming out on a very cold night.